Good evening, everybody. Uh, welcome to the August 5th Board of Education meeting. If you can please, uh, join me in the pledge.
By the United States of America. Public for which it's.
You can join me, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Cheryl Timineski, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Lucille Anne Procopio, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Tamara Moran, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We, uh, have two presentations these, uh, this evening. Um, the first one we have is the 21st Century Grant Presentation. So if you'd like to come up, welcome. Thank you.
And this is the clicker. Good evening, everyone. Uh, good member, uh, members of the board, members of the public. Thank you so much for, uh, having us. My name is Chow Lee. I'm the Director of the Rising Rock Stars Program, which is funded by the Community Learning Centers Grant. And I'm joined here by my fabulous colleagues, Katie Ohahara is a site coordinator, at the Roxbury Road Elementary School Program and Tim Carter, uh, from the Roxbury Road Middle School Program. And then Chris Lee, he is a big, uh, fan of ours. Uh, and Katie and Tim are from, uh, the YMCA, which is one of our partners. Alrighty, um, so just briefly, uh, what is Rising Rock Stars? So we, uh, were lucky to get a grant, uh, beginning in 2022, uh, to provide before and after school programs, uh, to kids at Roxale and Rox Middle. And we have this grant until June 2027. And we, our partners are the YMCA of Central New York and Contact Community Services. So our goal is to create a fun, uh, and safe learning environment for them during the, uh, the morning program at the elementary school and then after school at the elementary school and the middle school, so that they can make friends and develop, uh, kind of academic and social emotional skills. So here in the slide, I just wanted to show you the growth that we've had. Um, so we've increased, uh, the number of kids that, you know, have registered for the program, uh, by seventeen percent. And then we've also seen an increase of kids that are, are regulars. So these are rising rock stars that come, uh, you know, five days a week, uh, for like the whole, like thirty-two weeks that we run, uh, the program. And on average, uh, we have about, you know, sixty or so kids that come, uh, regularly at the middle school each day and about, you know, eighty to ninety students that come at the elementary school. So these are pictures of some of our, uh, kids that are some of our regulars. And, uh, they really do have a lot of fun with us and we have a lot of fun with them. So this, uh, chart includes data that we've gotten from our independent evaluators. So we are, uh, as part of the grant, we have to have an independent evaluator. And we work with Laura Payne Borsy, uh, Consulting Services. And they evaluate our program by doing site visits and doing surveys to students and parents and, uh, with the site coordinators. And so, um, and I also have to submit, uh, to them school tool data. Uh, and so in terms of attendance, we found that our participants that come to Rising Rock Stars just generally have a good, regular school attendance, which is great that they want to be in school and they want to stay longer at school and, uh, come be with us, uh, after school either at, from two forty-five to five thirty or three forty-five to five thirty. Um, and here is a chart of the ELA, um, scores, um, from Ames Web. And obviously, you know, Rising Rock Stars doesn't take credit for this, the teachers are, uh, Roxale and Rox Middle do such a fabulous job of like educating our students and, you know, going up above and beyond. But we really want to support all the, what they do, uh, by encouraging language and reading and doing fun things related to, to math and reading. Um, and about the grades. So we found that there was an improvement, uh, in grades from the seventh graders. So we get their, you know, sixth grade, uh, grades and compared to their current seventh grade, uh, grades. And we've seen an improvement, um, in year one of thirty-two percent and year two of fifty-four percent. So here is a copy of a letter, uh, that we got from the State Ed Department. So as a first time grantee, uh, we're required to do a, a visit from the State Ed Department. So Binghamton University are the reps. Uh, they, uh, are the Technical Assistance Center for the state in this region. And they came to do a site monitoring visit with us in December. And out of like forty-eight indicators, we hit a hundred percent on everything. So that means that we are considered a quality program. And it's really rare for a first time grantee, um, to, to get this kind of, you know, recognition. So they consider us a example of a quality after school program. So go Rising Rock Stars. Um, and definitely we couldn't have done it without, you know, Katie and Tim. And we also have Althea from Contact Community Services and great support from Chris and Dan and, you know, all the teachers and the principals at Roxale and Rox Middle. And it's definitely a group, uh, effort to make it so that we have this fun and safe environment for the kids to go to, uh, before school starts and after school starts. So now I want to turn it over to Katie, who will just give you some highlights of our program at the elementary school.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Uh, as Chow said, we really, uh, our goal is to let the students experience novel things that they may not experience, uh, with their families. And so in looking to do field trips, I've reached out to community partners that I've worked with in the past. And so just a couple of examples where the students really had just a wonderful time, uh, would be WCNY Studios where the students were there, as you can see with the Sesame Street Muppets. Um, and then we took them to the, uh, SU Sat North School of Music, where they listened to a rehearsal from the Syracuse University Orchestra, uh, with these big instruments. And it was really, really exciting. Uh, let's see, every week Cornell Cooperative Extension comes to teach a nutrition based recipe, uh, that they send the recipe home with the students. They've also done some work with the parents, inviting them in to learn how to cook healthy foods and foods on a budget. So that's been a lovely portion of our program and we, uh, anticipate working with them in the future. Uh, let's see, we have showcases throughout the year, quarterly, uh, showcases where the students are able to, uh, know what they've, what they've learned in terms of music or art, sign language, uh, African drumming. We have a teacher from the Y who's a master drummer, uh, who was trained in Ghana. We have teachers that, that know American Sign Language. And that's been wonderful for a couple of our students whose parents are Coda, students Coda. So yeah, uh, those are just a few highlights. I could go on and on and on. It's really exciting work.
One thing I want to add about the student showcases, uh, we're having one this Wednesday and Thursday. So if you're not doing anything on, uh, August 7th at one thirty, come to the elementary school. So you can see our summer showcase and then on August 8th at one thirty, it's at the middle school. And I actually, uh, this past year I got asked to present, uh, at the, the conference for, you know, all the 21st Century grantees, you know, about like what we're doing, uh, um, kind of best practice. And I showcased, you know, our student showcases, because a lot of programs actually don't do that. We find that the student case showcases is a great family engagement opportunity. And parents just love coming to see like their kids like sing and dance and share their artwork. And just, it's a way for them to like be connected to school that's really fun. And we offer food and it's just a great time. And we've had administrators, uh, Dan and Chris have come and really enjoyed themselves. And, um, I should also add that Donna Marie Norton is one of our fabulous Rising Rock Stars instructors. So she, uh, teaches the recorder to the third graders, uh, oh, once a week. And then she put on a little concert with the students and she's going to continue, uh, this, uh, next school year. So, cause she really loves the recorder and the students really love learning the recorder from her. So now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Tim, who will talk about the middle school.
Thank you. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak and I'm really glad to work with my two colleagues. Uh, I would like to just take a short time to, uh, kind of look back at the, uh, first two years of the program and the ways that we've changed our program based on feedback from everybody involved, staff, students and parents, um, something I'm proud of. As a coordinator and making those changes, I'm, I'm proud of. I also want to look ahead at some of the changes that we're going to make for, uh, in this upcoming year. Some things we changed early on based on feedback from staff, including the instructors in our program, but also the school day teachers was really trying to focus on the time spent in the program, focusing on finishing homework or skill building and communicating with the, um, student, um, teachers during the school day. And, you know, how, how to get work that a kid is missing, uh, from the teacher into the hands of the student so they can, um, finish it during the after school program before going off to drumming or painting. Um, and so building those connections with the teachers has been really important. And moving from, uh, kind of large group tutoring to small, small group tutoring with school day teachers in their classrooms. Um, heard a lot of feedback from students about the kinds of activities that they would want. It's really important to me that my middle schoolers can choose to do the kinds of arts enrichment that they want. And so I try to listen to, listen to them and, and try to give them what they want. So last year we had, um, things like journalism club. We had a role playing and board game club. And, uh, they really love cooking and eating food. So like our partnership with, uh, Cornell Co-op is, is really important. Um, they always ask about that. Um, but, uh, we also heard from parents about, um, setting up different, uh, parent events and one that I'm really proud of was, um, like a board game and video game night that we did at the middle school in partnership with, uh, two parents, uh, of kids in our program who are related to an organization called Safe Place to Game, um, and Retro Game Con. And they brought in like retro video games, uh, Guitar Hero and a lot of really great like board games. And kids just went nuts and it was a lot of fun. And, uh, it, it would just, it was a really standout event for me. And looking ahead, like Chow is a really great administrator and numbers person. I like to think of myself, I, I love a good spreadsheet, but I like to think about like the feelings of the, of coming to the program. And this summer with the program, we are, um, really trying to build a more loving culture among students. And some of the ways that we're doing that are things like, um, public shout outs at the end of the day where instructors kind of give, um, you know, thank you prizes out to students that they saw who were really being great leaders and, um, kind to other students and sharing that with the parents, like actually writing a, you know, just a quick note on an index card, sending it home with the kid. If it makes it home to the parent, awesome. Uh, if the kid just gets the index card and knows that, you know, we were thinking of them, also great. Uh, um, and kind of building more interactions like that among the students. Um, today they were just making awards for each other, uh, in preparation for our showcase this Thursday. So that's what I'm looking forward to trying and, and getting more feedback from, from students and, and staff into this next year or so. Yeah, so, um, the pictures that we have here, uh, the one on the bottom left is in our art, um, uh, class this summer and it's, they're doing a mix of kind of sculpture. Uh, and it's led by Elizabeth Holmes, who's, who's a, uh, sculpture artist and illustrator. And so I think she's also, there's like moth wings on the table. Uh, so they're making these like fabric moths. Um, uh, the middle picture is, uh, the trip that we went to, to the Jamesville Beach. Um, kids getting a little nature time. Uh, bottom right is our sports and games group. So they're outside most days, um, when it's not like a hundred degrees. Uh, you know, playing wiffle ball, kickball, different sports. Um, and then the top is missile faves, uh, music class. And this is like a ukulele rock group that they've formed. Uh, and she's, she's a music teacher at Roxborough Middle School and she's been with us from the beginning, so.
All right, so, uh, this slide just shows a progression of how we've, uh, made programmatic changes, uh, from year one to year two, just to really build an amazing program for our students. So, uh, in the grant proposal, the site coordinators were only scheduled to work four hours and you cannot start a new program with, uh, one full-time person and two four-hour people like each day. So we shifted that, um, and during the academic time, we first had it all in the cafeteria and then we found that that wasn't going to work. And so we broke it down to smaller groups and we didn't offer anything over the summer or, uh, school vacation weeks. And so in year two, this past year that just finished, um, so we, uh, now have Katie full-time working at the Y, doing like two roles at the Y, um, and then Tim, uh, seventy percent of the time at the middle school, which is really awesome to have colleagues that can work, you know, throughout the year, um, to administer the program. Um, and we have these academic home groups, uh, that are smaller. And, you know, it's like a home base where kids can really, you know, land and connect with the same teachers and the same students. Um, and we offered basketball camp during February break and April break. And we also offered art camp during April break as well. So moving forward, uh, for this, uh, coming year, uh, school year, we're starting the program on September 24th. Um, so it's basically two weeks after school, because we know that there's just going to be a lot of interest. Uh, because in the previous, you know, two years, we started like about a month after school. Um, and, you know, not so great. But, um, and then we hired, uh, Shannon Knapp, who, uh, is a tech coach in the district and a very experienced teacher to be our instructional coach, working with our middle school instructors. So we have, you know, instructors that are district teachers and district TAs, as well as, um, working artists from the YMCA. And, you know, people are at different levels of their, um, kind of skills and classroom management and knowing how to do project-based learning. And so we've hired Shannon to work with us a couple of days a week to really support all of instructors. Cause we find if the instructors are really awesome and are rock stars themselves, then the kids want to be with them. And they come and because our, uh, funding is based on the number of, uh, the hours that the students come to the program. Um, and also at the middle school, we're offering, we're hiring coaches, uh, from the district or in the community that are going to offer, you know, six to ten weeks of a specific sports. Cause we find that there's a group of kids who, all they want to do is play sports. And so we want to build their skill set so that they're able to make it hopefully to the modified teams, uh, at the middle, uh, at the middle school and the high school. So we're going to do, offer volleyball first from September to November and then December through February, basketball and then soccer, um, in the spring. Um, and also, uh, we find that, you know, it's a long day for kids. They come to school and they stay a little later. So sometimes they get a lot of feelings about staying so late after school. And so, uh, we want to have, uh, you know, more of our, uh, district counselors and therapists and social workers who already see the kids during the school day to work with them after school. Um, and so we built that in for this year. And then we're just a lot more, going to be a lot more intentional about the kind of professional development that we're doing, you know, with the Y staff only, but then also with the Y and the district staff, um, together. So that we can just build a stronger team. And we're really pleased that, um, we've had a lot of repeat, uh, instructors that come back, which is a good sign because they, they love the kids and the kids love them and they're doing good, uh, fun activities with our kids. And here is just, um, some comments. So each year the evaluators send out a survey and I don't get to see what they say except for what, you know, the Valaries tell me. And these are some of the comments, uh, the parents have said. And then just overall, parents are super grateful and, you know, we are saving parents like four thousand bucks at least a year in like before and after school care. Um, because I, I looked into like, if you go to the, the, the closest Y tier, which is in Liverpool, um, it's, I don't know, like twenty-five or fifty bucks a day for before and after school. And camps are like almost two hundred bucks a week. And so the fact that we're offering thirty-two weeks of, of free, you know, childcare is really, and good quality childcare is really amazing. And so they're just very satisfied with, um, what, uh, their kids are doing at Rising Rock Stars. Um, and that's all we got. Uh, so again, my name is Chow and this is Katie and Tim and we're open to any questions you have.
Yeah, I just, I just had one question. Um, by the way, this is an excellent program. Um, I think this is amazing. Um, I will pretend that Guitar Hero wasn't called a retro video game, but, you know, we can talk about that later. Um, I guess I am old now, but, um, I just was wondering if there was the decrease in improved school attendance. Is part of that because in the first year we had that improved in attendance? Um, so then there weren't as many students that really like needed that extra attendance boost? Is that kind of, am I reading that correctly?
So, so basically seventy percent of the students that came in the first year, you know, their overall school attendance were, had improved from, from the previous year. And then in year two, forty, forty-five percent. So we compared their, their regular school attendance from the previous year with the current year that they're in our program.
Yeah, and then, but the reason it's, second year is probably because some of the students already had improved attendance, so.
Yeah, like something like that.
It doesn't get much better. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was.
Know that the, the kids that come to Rising Rock Stars, because it's a huge time commitment. Cause they get to school at eight o'clock and sometimes they're on the bus at like seven o'clock and they stay all the way until like five thirty and they get on the bus. And so sometimes they're not home till like six fifteen, six thirty. So like they're like troopers are very committed to like, you know, coming to Rising Rock Stars. Cause they get to hang out with their friends and some of these kids like don't have a place where they can invite a friend over or like they get a free snack and cool field trips and just, um, and we find that this summer, we've had a lot of incoming fifth graders come, uh, to summer camp and they've already made friendships. And when you're going from elementary school to middle school and you know that you're going to come in and you already have like a couple of friends. And we've just seen some really wonderful friendships that have formed this summer. So they're just going to feel a lot more comfortable coming into the middle school, which is huge. Um, knowing that they, they have a buddy and they can come to Rising Rock Stars to hang out with them.
The comment, you guys are awesome. One thing I love is that the middle school kids that want to do sports and get more into it. I think this is huge because we have an imbalance between Jil and rocks. Yes. You know, with the varsity sport. So I think that's great to give these kids the opportunity to do more with sports early on.
I just have a couple, uh, suggestions, um, and you already gave, uh, tonight. Let, um, uh, Jill, our just your clerk, know when these celebrations are. Um, I'm trying to get us more involved, you know, in these things and we don't know about them. So, but, um, Paul and I just, um, a couple of weeks ago, attended a New York School Boards Association. This would be a great presentation. Um, always for North Syracuse, getting out there and letting other school districts. It's, it's for superintendents and, uh, Board of Education members. It's in July, it's just, uh, two days. And, uh, I'll give you the information down there because it would be great to have this program. But to, uh, to, to let other superintendents and, um, like this year JD was there. to let other superintendents and like this year JD was there. I like seeing North Syracuse. So thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for having us.
Hey, next I'd like to invite up Mr. Clark for his technology update.
I don't sit well, so I'm going to stand. All right. Thanks, Jill. All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me here. So I was asked to come give an update on pretty much everything technology. So we've got to run a gamut of things here today. But what I wanted to start with. Sorry, I hit the wrong button. Is where I finished up last year. So this is actually directly from the presentation from last year. And we went through and we've gotten to a point where we have started to, you know, we've we've got things in place, and so it's a little bit of maintaining and updating from there. But a lot of these things that we had on the ROM BAP last year, we've continued. So we've been continuing to work with Sinomi. We've been continuing to look at our NIST gap assessment. We've done some upgrades to our server infrastructure. We are continuing to increase cybersecurity awareness and look at that threat landscape. So this is where I ended last year, just to give you a refresher from the last presentation. But what I wanted to start with, though, was something fun. We had our second year of Micron Chip Camp this year. And so the, I first want to say, the teachers that helped us out this year came, they all came back. They had so much fun last year that they all came back again this year, and they stepped it up. This year's camp was amazing. We ended up going with sixth and seventh graders this year instead of seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, which was a good switch. It was, I think it hit the right, this, that age was the right for the right level for this camp. So again, we took a trip down to Cornell to the Nano Fab, and the kids got to work with with some of the folks at Cornell. And it's always good to get them out and about. I like to do the field trips so they see something different and see some of their eyes on the bus when we pull onto Cornell's campus. So like, wow, this is something I've never seen before. So it was good. They, you know, they got to put on bunny suits, and they took a tour of their, a virtual tour of the fab. So that picture down on the left corner is the, one of the folks that I work with at Cornell around the he actually put on funny glasses and did a whole like Bill Nye tour of their fab virtually because we obviously couldn't take 100 sixth and seventh graders through a high level clean facility. That wouldn't work. So he suited all up and walked them through their fab to show what was going on. And then we went to Elite Gaming. I'll show you some some pictures from there. Elite Gaming is something very unique to our area. It's a esports arena that they've actually moved from the most to the atrium building because they ran out of room. They they started, and within about three weeks of starting, they realized that they were out of space. So the new facility, and you'll see some here in a second from there. And then the third day was here over the junior high, we did some just amazing STEM activities. So this year, we actually also partnered with ESM and Shitnango. We invited ESM and Shitnango to bring, they each brought five students in to just start to to move that camp to a broader audience from just here. So, you know, I know that the plan is to continue to grow that. So this was the proof of concept on that. So I do want to show you a few pictures. And this link is live for everyone. So if you want to look through the ones that I don't show you, then. So this is actually from Elite Gaming, just to give you an idea. So also to build on that esports thing, we have two teams now. We have a high school team that has been doing very, very well. They won state championship last year in Mario Kart. It was an amazing, it was, I've been involved in a lot of sporting events, and I went to that championship, and it was one of the most exciting sports events I've been part of. It was crazy, me being me, you know, football player from way back. But to stand there and and see all these kids compete in Mario Kart and have just as much excitement as I've seen on the lacrosse field, the football field, it was amazing. So the esports team is doing very well at the high school, and we started one up at the element or at the junior high last year. And so we purchased a few computers to start expanding out their game options. But like I said, I want to, you know, thank the teachers, but just click through some of these pictures here.
Ethan, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Just to remind the board, esports is bigger than the film and music industry combined, as well as college scholarships are being offered at many more colleges every single year. So it is becoming a definite force at the post-secondary level.
Yeah, the scholarships that are available for students have grown tremendously. So this is one of those opportunities for kids that it's and I think I've talked to you guys about this before. But the reason why I really got involved with esports is because I was so involved with athletics. And it was probably one of the biggest growth moments in my life was being part of a team and allowing students that wouldn't normally be part of a team to be part of a team was just, I couldn't not do it. And to see some of these students really come out of their, you know, the number of parents that were at the the state championship Mario Kart that came up to me and were like, this has changed my son. This is the my daughter has really, you know, this is amazing. Thank you so much. This is, I've never seen them like this. So it's it's really going to take off, and we're, the plan is to grow this as much as we can. So. But I'm not going to spend too much time just going through the pictures. You guys can take a look. But the the students had a lot of fun, and it all ended up with the rocket launch out in the baseball field next to the junior high. And the there was, there was probably close to 150 parents there along with 100 kids. And it was, it was quite an event to wrap up. So that was something that was just a success this year. All right. So now to some security stuff. So we have partnered with a new company locally. So Talis Security is two gentlemen that have been in the cybersecurity industry for, I think combined the two of them, over 20 years of experience in cybersecurity. And they've recently created a COSER at Bosse's. So we have joined into that COSER. And their VISO Service, which is Virtual Chief Information Security Officer, they have a program in place that's going to work with myself and the and the infrastructure team to really take a look at our cybersecurity posture and give us some recommendations. So I'm really excited to work with them. Both TJ and I have have met with them, and they've got a really solid plan in place to kind of see where we are and work alongside us to really build our cybersecurity posture and kind of, kind of look at where we are and help get things in place. So this really, right now, is a, it's a one year plan to to kind of look at everything, do a deep dive into it, and then give some suggestions and some steps forward. We continue also to work with MA Polsey, which is another local company. And we continue to look at our NIST cybersecurity framework to be in compliance with that because of Ed Law 2D. And so we're working again with a product called Sinomi to track where we are with the NIST framework. So those are the two big things around cybersecurity. But also, we have our, we have to increase our multi-factor authentication. We had two very close calls last year. One was a email that was a phishing email that we had a couple of folks put their password into, and it could have been very bad had the people that got those credentials gone a different direction. And then after that, we had a breach of a Google account that sent out an email to 900 students that was asking for banking information and things like that. So a result of those two very close calls, we have to bump up our our MFA. So what we're doing, we're working this summer to bring on one of the industry leaders in multi-factor, which is Duo. So we're right now in the process of working on bringing on Duo for multi-factor on the Google side. We originally put multi-factor on our email, but now we have to put it on the on the Google side as well. So we're implementing Duo over the course of August so that we're able to have that in place. We've really, really tried, TJ has been working very hard to make sure it's as low impact as possible. When you're inside the walls, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for the teachers to do their job and for everyone to do the work that they have to do. It's when they're outside the castle walls that they have to, you know, do a little bit more MFA and just make sure that you are who you are is really the the bottom line with that. So that's one big thing that's coming up on the horizon here. Another initiative that we are able to work on because of some grant funding that we were able to leverage, the, we got money from the third round of the Emergency Connectivity Fund grant, and that was able to purchase a large number of Chromebooks. So we had some money available, or money we didn't spend that made sense to roll into replacing our aging smartboard infrastructure. The smartboards are very old. There are projectors that I've walked into classrooms doing observations and can barely see. Like, I'm like, whoa, why are all the lights off? Oh, I see why all the lights are off because you can't see the board. I've had art teachers that have said, I teach art, but my projector doesn't show color very well. Well, that's that's difficult. So we made it a priority to work on replacing all of the smartboards across the district with 75 inch ViewSonic panels, interactive panels. So we have a, we have an amount of boards that we have that we are working to finish up Gillette, Cicero, and start at the junior high. And then we've also moved some money around in the Smart Schools Bond Act money, which is, we still had a little pocket there. And so we moved some of that around so we can leverage that and close that bond out to purchase some more ViewSonics. And then we'll evaluate where we are and possibly have to pick up a few in the lease that we do annually. But because of that very large, almost million dollar ECF grant, we were able to to move some monies around and spend it in an appropriate way. So hopefully next year at this time, when I have this presentation, we won't have any smartboards in the in the district anymore. That's the plan. The problem is the the labor involved with it. It's it's easy to buy them. It's hard to to take the the smartboards down and put the ViewSonics up. So we're working with them and over closely, and we've got a plan in place. But we are, hopefully, over the next year, be, we're going to be done with projectors, done with replacing bulbs, done with smartboards, and be 100% ViewSonic across the district. So that's the plan. And then professional development, I did want to give a shout out to the tech coaches. Again, my my team is amazing. I'm up here, you know, talking, but I, my whole team is is really firing on all cylinders, and I have to give them a ton of credit. Whether it's the infrastructure, the coaches, the tech TAs, everyone is just doing an amazing job. The library media specialists, the the tech ed folks, everyone is just, you know, really doing a great job. So this is our summer development, summer professional development numbers. So we have over 500 and there are 353 participants. Now, that may be the same person counted twice, but they're they're people in the seats. And if you're looking at all that, those numbers up, it's it's almost 8,500 hours of PD over the course of two months. So the coaches are really doing an amazing job. They came up with some very interesting, interesting trainings, and they fill up very quickly. So they're they're doing an amazing job. What's that? I did not, I'm not that creative. That's where they come in. Those were all, those were all made up by them. And, you know, maybe a little chat GPT might have helped too a little bit, but who knows? But yeah, they they're, they've put together some, even to the point where Dave London asked, he sat in on one of their trainings and asked them to actually come in and present to the admin team meeting last week because it was such a well done presentation. He's, he asked if they would come and and present to all the admins in the district. So they came and did a, an overview of the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, that it's going to be a big focus this year. And so that all the admins are on the same page with what they are. We've had a lot of summer work around these standards that are being adopted this September and trying to get the word out there and putting it into the classes that we have. So we have some folks doing some work around CKLA and identifying where CKLA and the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards mixed together. We also have some middle school science teachers doing the same thing. And the library media specialists are working and looking where the computer science standards can fit into the library as well. So that this summer, a lot of that work is happening. And then over the course of the year, a big focus is going to be STEAM. In combination with the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, STEAM is going to be a big focus just because that gets kids thinking. And that's, that's one of the main reasons I got into education was to get kids thinking, hands on problem solving and thinking. So we're going to have a big focus on STEAM and getting some some more exposure. I've been working with the library media specialists and some other programs to to look to get STEAM into the elementary level. The libraries are are prime for that. And also the middle school STEAM clubs that are in place, working to to give them some more resources to really build that out. And also look at the first Lego League that some other districts are participating in. And I've been waiting for a Micron grant, which actually this afternoon at four o'clock, I got an email saying that it's, I got the link to click on to make it official. So I'll be filling that out and and moving forward with that. So that'll help with some of these initiatives. I've been talking about it and been waiting, and it better be lucky than good that email came in this afternoon. So we'll be working on that. At the junior high, we've purchased a bunch of 3D printers. They're, they're really moving forward with 3D printing. We got a new laser cutter over there, some new CNC machines. So they've got the tools, and now they're all very excited to to weave those tools into their day to day practice and get the kids some hands on experience with some high end manufacturing processes, some some 3D printing, some CNC, some laser cutting and engraving. So there's a lot of new tools over the past couple of years over at Junior High that they're really excited to get to work on. And then at CNS, we are, this year will be the first year with the OCC, electromechanical pathway, where students 10th, 11th, and 12th can take classes for free from OCC. And in in theory, they would be able to, by the time they they finish up at CNS, have a associate's degree on the, what's considered the Micron Pathway at OCC, which is it's technically the ELM electromechanical. It's a advanced manufacturing partnership with OCC. So we're working to implement that into some of the 10th grade level classes this year, and then we'll build that out over the next couple of years so that they can, we can move forward with that. So road ahead, Talis partnership. We're also looking at and bringing in some more advanced security with MDR and XDR, which is basically some monitoring tools that we're we're starting to look at. Multi-factor with Duo. Continue to use Sinomi. Cybersecurity awareness is always a big, a big thing on my list, just to keep us safe and STEAM opportunities. So that's where we are. Questions?
Burns, and both of us went to the same one on AI, which was scary. But I went to one individually, why he went to a different one from the Greater Johnstown School District and how this is made improvement in their education program, how it's made life easier for teachers, administrators. How far along are we with AI? I see that you How far along are we with AI? I see that you presented, somebody presented a class, but how far are we into it?
So
Positive educational part.
Yeah, so this, this past year was kind of one of those like, let's, let's get people familiar with it and, and aware. The coaches put together an amazing uh AI site that's on our staff page, which gives an overview of anything uh AI. We've tried to, to, to cycle it into uh, you know, meetings. I know the coaches have, have done individual trainings, but then kind of sprinkled AI in as a, hey, you know, you can do this. Hey, you know, you can do this. Uh, and a lot of the tools we use are, they're not even asking us anymore. They're, they're, they're popping, the features are popping up all over the place. So it's, it's coming in. So the focus this year would be to build some more of that capacity around um being more purposeful with, with AI and how it fits in the classroom. Um, you know, the, the blocking it isn't a thing. It's, it's, it's understanding how to, how to do it and how to use it effectively. Um, because they'll just pick up their phone and do it anyway.
Basically beginning with it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're on the early stages of it. Uh, Chris, myself, the tech coaches and some teachers had a, had a group last year that came together and put a guiding document together that's on that uh webpage, and it's been out there. It's, you know, it's, we're trying to go slow. Um, but it's, it's definitely on our, our path. Yep.
I'm going to forward you tomorrow the slides that
Awesome. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, because I wasn't going to, but I, one thing that stuck out. They said to embrace it more and it's talked a lot about how to write a proper prompt, how to write the question so you're getting what you want to get out of there.
Yep.
But also they talk about an eighty-twenty rule, I think it was, that eighty percent is accurate, twenty percent not, and
Oh, no.
Teach how to edit, how to go through and review it. I thought that was interesting because I, I had walked into it, where you're like, how do we stop? Which, I know we talked about, you talked about it last year, I think the first time I heard about it, Matt. You brought it up. I didn't know what we were talking about and, and uh all about how do we stop, stop it? And it's no longer
Yeah.
They, they don't even teach coding now in all places because you can just
Yeah, it, it would, it would be a detriment to our students.
I had a TI thirty when I was in high school, you know what that is?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Um, you know, it's funny, you, you bring up a pro- the prompting, prompting of, of uh AI is one of the things where it's like I find myself actually being like, would you please and, and treating it like a, like a person? So the prompt is actually a very good way to start uh the writing process. Where, where if you, I, I've, I've seen where teachers have used actually the prompt and getting an uh answer from ChatGPT to then edit that and make it your own. Um, got you done. But yeah, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot going on with AI that's going to be uh, be helpful. Anything else?
Anyone else? Jason, I just want to thank you and commend you and your team for the work you did on the CrowdStrike bug
Yeah.
a week and a half ago. So I know that was crazy for everybody.
Yep.
Um, but you guys sailed through that.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I, again, I have to give full credit to my team on like, you know, they, they, they're, they're doing amazing. Um, I, I can't take the credit at all. They're, they're firing at all cylinders. They're doing an amazing job. So um, and that was the day that I was heading, I was heading on vacation on Friday. So
You have a phenomenal
I, I, I planned on coming into a nice, easy Friday, and it was the opposite of that.
Jason, can you refresh us on the number of people you called and they came in probably within an hour?
Yeah, so traditionally over the summer, we have, so every building has a tech TA. And those folks are my boots on the ground, first line of defense, doing an amazing job, but they're generally off on Friday. We put out kind of the bat signal and said, help. And uh, I think nine of the, or eight of the ten came, like whoever was available, dropped everything they're doing, they came in on their day off. Uh, they came in, they said, what can we do? They were, they were, you know, Sherry was on a call with them and brushing teeth and getting, like, they, they came in on a moment's notice, came in. Uh, TJ and Ryan had a plan in place. We got everything together. We're like, okay, let's go. They were buttoned up and finished by four o'clock. So we had to physically, with that CrowdStrike, we had to physically touch every computer that was affected. Uh, so I, and they even, I, they had me with a, I had a post-it note with what I had to type into the, the command line. And I was going around, I, you know, I took care of this building for the most part. They went out into the other buildings, but all hands on deck, typing in, you know, typing in what we had to type into the command line to get things back, to get the blue screen gone. Um, but yeah, we were all buttoned up and wrapped up by, by the end of the day. And it was funny, one of the TAs was actually supposed to fly out that day, had to postpone because nothing worked. She said she went to the airport like a week later, and there were still blue screens up at the airport. And said, well, I know how to fix that. Should I see if Delta needs my help? And so um, but yeah, I, it was, thank you. It was, it was, that was not our fault, but it, they, they jumped to it and it was, it was crazy, but it was good. Yep, thank you.
Uh, were you guys able to take advantage of the ten-dollar Uber gift cards that CrowdStrike provided?
I hadn't even heard of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, uh, we have no comments from the audience this evening, but as always, we welcome community input if anyone would like to give it. Moving on to Board of Education Committee reports, do we have any?
A quick update, uh, our first meeting will be September seventeenth, and I, my understanding is that we just received the three-one BOSIS policy manual today. And hopefully we'll uh, we'll break the seal on that and see what it has.
Dan?
Thank you. Um, as you can see uh from the Rising Rockstar presentation, uh, one of the things that Chris and I have experienced is being in the audience during their celebrations and listening to the parents. Um, it is uh such a relief that they know their kids are engaged before and after school with a rich uh program, allows them to socialize with their friends and also learn and have fun. So um, the more we can get feedback from parents, and I think that may be one thing that we do is get students and parents here to talk about the Rising Rock, Rockstars. Um, I'll be working with uh Mr. Shido uh about board presentations and how we like bringing students and families. And so those celebr- uh celebrations, we will continue um to showcase. Uh, the other thing, for those that have come here during the week, um, sometimes it's uh parking at the junior high or across the road because there's been a lot going on with professional development. Um, so um, there is uh our ELA math coaches, our tech coaches have done, uh, again, as you see, an amazing job. Um, one of the things that they had us doing, the tech coaches, is actually um playing a little game. One of us was supposed to be a kind of a programmer, the other had to execute the program and just watching uh the, the logistics and the thinking process. These are the skills that we want to make sure we're teaching our, our children at a younger age. And the, the last thing that uh Jason Clark was talking about phishing uh as far as the attacks that we get, and Mr. Herman clarified something for me today. I didn't realize the extent, but schools get about three hundred thousand phishing attacks a day. And the technology and things that are in place to thwart that is vital. I didn't realize it was that high. I know what happens on our end because people will want to get to someone in authority that someone may answer a question to. So I've been called where people have said, oh, did you send me this email? Or it didn't come from me, but that number was staggering. So um the things they're doing on the backend are critical. Thank you.
Do we have any board comments?
Um, tomorrow and Wednesday is the Equity Conference that OCMBOSIS is hosting at the West Hill High School. Um, this is the second year they've done it. A lot of superintendents, uh, some board members go to it. It's, they've got some really good speakers. But I wanted to um relay what I read in the paper yesterday. Um, I'm still one of those, I'm sorry, that has to have the paper in my hand. But Mr. Dunham, Superintendent of the West Hill Central School District, wrote an article um, which to me was very, very amazing, and it's entitled, "We Deserve Better From Our Political" um, where's my glasses? Leaders, but just parts of it, "We Can Be Better Citizens Too By Seeking Better Information, Respecting Others, and Modeling Civility For Our Kids." Our former president has talked about this at our meetings, and then one other paragraph. "One of our primary responsibilities as a public school is to develop informed, engaged, and responsible citizens who can think for themselves. It is not our place to influence what they think, but to create the habits of mind to think critically and thoughtfully." If you can get this article, and I know Beth uh as a principal in that school district received it, it's really well said about what we should be doing in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I haven't finished a paper yet, but I still get a paper. I, I read the funnies first. Well, try to bring some levity to the day. No, I just wanted to mention that uh I had signed up for school boards, and excuse my voice, uh, conferences in October. With the board's permission, if uh I could have Joel appoint me as the person who does the voting delegate at the Resolutions Committee meeting, I'd be happy to do that again. For the board, I've done it the last couple of years. Uh, if anybody else is interested in doing it, that's fine also. It's a virtual meeting. It was six hours last year, so it's not always fun, but uh if there isn't any objection to that, I, that, that opens up later in the week or next week for registration. Excuse me. Thank you.
I would just like to remind the community that the um Superintendent Search Survey is still open until next Friday. So if anyone would like to fill that out, you can go to NSCSD.org slash superintendent to find the link to fill out um our input survey. On to some routine action items. Uh, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion to put that on the table? Mark, Amanda, all those in favor? Anamis? I'd like to group B, C, and D together. They're the consideration of classification and placement for students. Do I have a motion to group those and put those on the table? Beth? Josh, all those in favor? Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus. It looks like we had some filing cabinets and other furniture on there. Uh, do I have a motion to place that before us? Bob, Paul, all those in favor? Question action items. First one we have tonight is the uh resolution approving the employment agreement and authori- authorizing of execution of the employment agreement. This is for um our interim superintendent, Michael Shido, uh, who is here tonight. So thank you, Mike. Um, do I have a motion to place that before us? Bob? Amanda, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you and welcome, Mike. B is the uh resolution to create a school bus dispatcher position. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth, do we have any questions?
Matt, um, our new director of human resources is in on his, there was an excellent um wanted ad. Um, Dan's not here. I don't know who wrote it, but it's excellent. I've been pushing for things to be in the paper. I'm one of those with the paper. Um, bus drivers don't go to the things that teachers go to or administrators go. This was really well-written. Um, Dan, I was just talking about the substitute school bus attendant, substitute school bus driver that was put in the paper. Yes, excellent. Whoever wrote that, um, because like me. Just well-written and out there for people to see.
Do I have a second? Amanda, all those in favor? Resolution to create a point-two FTE speech and language pathologist. Do I have a motion to place that on the table? Uh, Beth? All those in, all those in favor? Resolution to abolish point-two FTE physical therapist and create a point-four FTE physical therapist and abolish a point-two FTE occupational therapist and create a point-four FTE occupational therapist at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. Do I have a motion to place that before the table? Josh, Mark, any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask the same question I do every time we do this because I forget. We don't just add a point-two to the point-two to get point-four, we get rid of a point-two and add a four to get four? Is this mystery math or we got to get rid of a position and create it? Okay. I, I guess I've just seen in the past where we've added point-two to a or for example, made it a point-six, so I don't I don't, but that's okay. Thank you. I'll ask it next year.
All those in favor? Resolution to create a one-point-o FTE grade-four classroom teacher at Gillette Road Middle School. Do I have a motion to place that? Yeah, although, any questions? Josh?
I, I just want to make sure that the tons of people that are watching at home uh know that uh it's because we're going to have Lake Shore at Gillette next year. I just was a little misled when I was looking at the side, so I wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
All those in favor? And the next one, designated for board sponsorship, we are accepting a two-thousand-dollar sponsorship contract. So the motion is to approve that. Do I have a motion? Josh and Amanda, all those in favor? I'd just like, before we move into personnel, to acknowledge Sharon Andrews, a food service helper one, is retiring with thirty-two point seven years of service.
Say something, of course, because I know her. Um, we've kind of become, when I'm up to high school, I always go talk to the food service. She has done a marvelous job at CNS High School. This is way before COVID. The, if you remember, the board members here that were here, that our lunches and breakfasts were they were low, they were very low, especially breakfast. She started this um morning program in the foyer with juice and milk and cereal, and it just exploded. She comes up with great ideas. It is going to be a huge loss for this district. She has worked so hard, and to be here for thir- almost thirty-three years and food service is amazing. She's a wonderful lady.
So we all wish her a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Personnel, do we need an executive session before we take the personnel item? Personnel item A, do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth, Paul? That's unanimous. Port staff personnel B, do I have a motion to place that before us? Josh, Beth, all those in favor? And administrative report C, do I have a motion to take that? Mark, Josh, all those in favor? Anamis, and I'd like to welcome uh Michael Barudy, who's going to be our new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Welcome. At this time, I'd like to um make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one negotiation matter, one personnel matter, and one workshop item with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Amanda, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and um I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Josh, all those in favor? That's unanimous. For adjourned, thank you.